All right. Good evening and welcome everyone to our regular board meeting. I would like to call upon Mariette Martineau to lead us in prayer.
Good evening, everyone. Our opening prayer for this board meeting is very simple. We're going to have a quick remembrance and celebration of our past year. So we gather in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. God of wonder and love, during this school year, you summoned us to work with you to help build a community of learning, love, and service. May we reflect on the insights of our time together so we can make next year even better than this year. May we reflect your wisdom and love to those we serve and work with. May we grow to understand that we sow seeds that may not be harvested for some time. God of mercy and forgiveness, help us to understand that our incompleteness is a gift, a way to reach out to the other, a way of inviting the other to minister to us. Be with us always. May we open our hearts to wisdom and song, joy and wonder, truth and compassion, peace and tranquility this day and always. Amen.
Amen.
Saint John, pray for us.
Pray for us.
Saint Louis.
Pray for us.
Saint Marguerite Bourgeois.
Pray for us.
Saint Jean Paul II.
Pray for us.
Saint Thomas Aquinas.
Pray for us.
And we close our prayer and begin our meeting in the name of the Father and the Son and the Saintes-Prières.
Thank you once again, Mariette, for your beautiful prayer to start our meeting this evening. So roll call, all trustees are present. Welcome. And we've done number three. Number four, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Hearing none, we will move on to number five. Consideration and approval of the agenda. We have an addition of items, so 9.7.1, OECTA and KCDSB collective agreement, and 9.7.2, Principal Vice Principal Central Discussion Table regarding terms and conditions of employment. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the agenda be approved as amended.
Moved by Anne Sweeney, seconded by Vaughn Blapp. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Thank you. Number six, confirmation of the minutes. The recommendation, which is on page one, Trina, please.
That the minutes of the meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of May 19th, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by Frank. Frank Bastoni, seconded by Anne Sweeney. Any opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Okay, now we will move down. Number seven is nothing under there. Number eight, delegations and presentations. 8.1, Saint Louis Living Arts School. Welcoming.
Thank you very much, everyone. We are delighted to be here. We are very appreciative to have your time this evening to share with you our revisioning of Saint Louis School. Our team members here today are Leann Chisholm, Carrie Favreau, Teresa Clark, and Karen Smith. Our conversations this school year with our school team surround the idea that we wanted to reignite a sense of excitement around education and our school. I'm just going to see if that slide will move.
Mariette just gets stuck sometimes in that spot. There we go.
And there it is, thank you. These are some of the questions that we considered as we explored the options around what our mission at Saint Louis School is, what we believe that families are looking for in education. We know that there are many things that we do at Saint Louis School that deserve to be celebrated by our students, our families, and the system. We are a Catholic school that serves many families and students who value the Catholic education that they receive. We have seen and heard from parents that they want their children's education to be connected to our world and to be responsive to the needs of the world.
Sorry, it's, there we go. Just a bit of a delay.
In our consideration, we know that great strength is found in our school with the ties with the local community, with families, and with the parish. We've made many new little friends in the past two years. We have a strong academic history, and our school improvement plan over the last few years has worked to make this even stronger. The arts have always had a strong place at Saint Louis. Our musicals and choir are known community-wide. We also have a deep connection to nature, shown by our upcoming Eco-School certification, our Down-to-Earth Nature Club, and our school gardens. Our staff is committed to bringing the very best to our students. There is so much going on at Saint Louis School to celebrate. And in our call to be a Catholic school, as was said at the Provincial Catholic Education Week Mass by His Eminence Cardinal Collins, that we are called on a mission and sent on a mission. Our Social Justice Club's motto is hear both the cry of the earth and the cry of the poor. Recently, the students of our Social Justice Club ran a food drive during the pandemic as they realized that even though we are not together, they have the ability and responsibility to make a difference and to serve others. And so we ask ourselves in answering the call to mission, how do we build a community that resembles God's kingdom here on earth? And after much prayer and reflection, careful consideration and consultation, we've put together a plan to celebrate the uniqueness of Saint Louis School under a banner that allows us to bring synergy to all the varied things that we do and to bring light to shine on our amazing school.
The living arts are skills that have been cultivated by humans for hundreds and even thousands of years. These skills are life-enriching and bring together head, heart, and hands. Often, there is a restorative quality to developing the living arts as they offer a chance to connect deeply with one's own humanity while building strong relationships with God and others. We can see how the living arts could be relevant to our children at this time and can even anticipate their healing impact. Throughout this pandemic, an interesting phenomenon is occurring. Many people are recovering lost skills such as building, gardening, and baking. In addition, society is embracing the living arts as a way to comfort and express. People are singing, painting, sewing, and creating. The living arts speak truth, beauty, and goodness. And we believe that we can use these insights to show the relevance of Catholic education. Several weeks ago, Dr. Hame shared a quote that I thought was very inspiring and relevant to us. And it's by Frank Graves. "Most of us think that we are on the cusp of a broad transformation. Out of all this sadness, economic grief, and death, can we imagine the possibility that this will allow us to do some of the profound changes that otherwise would have been impossible?" And we believe that the Saint Louis Living Arts School does just that.
What makes Saint Louis Living Arts School unique? Our school lives out our call to care for our common home through stewardship and ecological restoration. Pope Francis, in his message for the Celebration of the World Day of Prayer for the Care of Creation, explained that as a spiritual work of mercy, care for our common home calls for a grateful contemplation of God's world, which allows us to discover in each thing a teaching which God wishes to hand to us. A single question can keep our eyes fixed on the goal. What kind of world do we want to leave to those who come after us, to children who are now growing up? With our living arts focus, we will instill in our students the principles of the Catholic social teachings, which include a call to family, community, participation, and caring for God's creation. Our school offers comprehensive and creative programming in art and design, food arts, gardening, and animal care, performance arts, instrumental music, traditional crafts, outdoor education, and much more. When we say much more, we recognize that the possibilities are truly endless in the meaningful work, study, and skills that we can explore within our school and the greater community. Our school is a hub of learning where experiences and opportunities are available for all ages. With this vision, we will create a learning environment in which every student is provided the opportunity to learn a variety of skills with a common school focus. By engaging in this way of learning and being, our students actively live the Catholic graduate expectations. When we consider the expectations for Catholic school graduates, we can see that the learning experiences in the Saint Louis Living Arts School will help our students to become discerning believers formed in the Catholic faith community, effective communicators, reflective, creative, and holistic thinkers, self-directed, responsible lifelong learners, collaborative contributors, caring family members, and responsible citizens.
You can see in the quotes from staff that the Living Arts School was the concept that resonated the most with us as we clearly saw it as an extension of what we were doing already. We started off with having a meeting just to discuss the idea of developing a focus for our school and gave staff the opportunity to contribute other ideas and comment on the possibility of the Living Arts School. After providing time for reflection, we came together again to discuss any input. We can see here in the quotes taken from group meetings, individual meetings with Maureen or email responses, that teachers, EAs, and our ECE had taken the time to reflect carefully on this proposal and felt that the Saint Louis Living Arts School was something that was a natural fit for us. We received a quote from a staff member that we would like to share. "Saint Louis has always seemed like one big family. The sense of community here is felt by everyone through the loving and supportive nature of the staff, students, and families. Bringing a living arts curriculum to Saint Louis will only deepen the sense of community by inviting even more people to be a part of our family. Whether it is volunteers, parents, or special interest clubs, I want students to understand that learning occurs through everyone they meet, and we all have something to learn from one another. I feel like we have always been a unique school that focuses on being real in the sense of allowing students to be themselves, allowing them to discover and strengthen their God-given gifts, and allowing them to work with their head, their heart, and their hands. I pray our school continues to be one of love, community, and inquiry as we move in this new direction." And our vision and mission for a living arts school would be aligned with the strategic plan for Canora Catholic. We did not actually set out to match the strategic plan, but found that when we looked at what we wanted to build, we found its roots in what the board is striving towards: growing. Our Catholic mission is to give the best opportunities to our students. Investing. We are providing students with experiences through which they will learn about themselves. Engaging. We do authentic learning in partnership with the community. I'm wondering, Teresa, you are muted?
I am muted, thank you. I'm going to expand on the first pillar, which is growing. We believe in the dignity of each person and work to create a more just society by living out our Catholic values. We strive to be leaders in taking action to increase and amplify ecological programming and practices. We believe these actions will lead to greater care for creation. And we believe that the children at our school will develop holistically over time. We strive for academic achievement and spiritual growth, and we promote capability for the art of living.
Investing. When we reflect on the highlights of each year at Saint Louis School, they often center around the living arts, whether it be through workshops, gatherings, clubs, or school-wide themes or classroom activities that have community impact. So the model we're using is built on the success of that culture. This is a natural progression, and we find it amazing that we can respond to the needs of families while bringing something that was already started into a fuller fruition. So many of you are familiar with our Artists in Residence Program, the Down-to-Earth Nature Club, and our annual Learning Festival. This programming will be built on a similar model, and we will be working, staff and students will be working with a variety of local experts to bring the curriculum to life. So typically, classes would have a one- to two-hour workshop every two weeks. Teachers would be responsible for building the workshops into their programs in meaningful ways. There are plenty of resources available for this, and we know we are going to have tremendous support. And we are prepared for very robust and innovative experiences. I actually find it really amazing that we're drawing on the past to be innovative and embrace the future.
Engaging. Learning is available for all ages. Our school is accessible to groups and individuals who want to offer workshops and classes which reflect the vision of a living arts school. There is always something wonderful happening at the school. Retreats, special events, and day camps are encouraged. These could be offered by staff members or from members of our community. One classroom would be designated as a community classroom and would be designed and furnished for this purpose.
So we created a draft of what a school year could look like at Saint Louis Living Arts School, and we'll share a little bit of a glimpse with you tonight. But as you know, we need to be responsive and adapt our plans as necessary. We've identified themes for each month, which are quite broad in nature so classroom teachers can easily bridge their own curriculum. The workshops are meticulously planned to be comprehensive, but they leave plenty of space for spontaneous inquiry. We hope these themes will have a unifying effect on the school, but that they will also promote diversity. So as you can see, we have September and October. There are many different ways to experience a topic. Each theme has a corresponding scripture passage, and you can trace the journey that will unfold throughout the school as the year progresses. There's a rhythm of reaching out and drawing in. And as you look, you can begin to imagine how our current festivals, events, and fundraising can be streamlined for greater impact. For example, our Fall Festival could bring together open house, fall fundraising, learning workshops, annual soup making, and student conferencing into one impactful event. We have also started to build in the community workshops. This broadens and enhances the work of the school as it keeps us in a hive of activity. As Leann said, something wonderful is always happening at the school. In anticipation of our topics, we plan on sharing a little trailer with families, like a little movie trailer, in advance so they can have a glimpse of what is in store for their child. We think this will build excitement as families can imagine the many things that might be happening at the school. So we have a draft example for you today. Oh, after this. Sorry. We mentioned also the community classroom where the workshops will take place. So this is a really special part of what we're doing because I think it sends a message that learning is available for everyone. It will be different from other types of gathering places in town because we want this to be multi-generational. So we want to make this space special and give it a name and a sign. We can constantly add to workshop ideas. But as we get really good at this, the goal would be to have kind of a syllabus so people could see what kinds of things are happening through the year and sign up for them. So there are many, many possibilities, and you're probably already thinking of people that would be wonderful to connect with this kind of work. So here, I just want to make sure our audios, I hope our audio is working. Give me a thumbs up, Leann, because I have your face on the screen.
I just wanted to add for the trustees that I believe you do have in your email some of the other themes for the year, the draft year at a glance that you would be able to look through and look at the activities that we have planned. So our goals from our presentation here today would be from the trustees that we would be given permission to name ourselves and celebrate ourselves as the Saint Louis Living Arts School and thereby giving ourselves a very clear identity. We would love support for our students and staff in realizing this vision and your support in communicating and promoting this goal to our stakeholders and the broader community. And finally, our goal is to provide our students with an exceptional education in the best way we know how. We believe that celebrating the things that we already do well and creating a school-wide focus, we will fulfill our mission as a dynamic Catholic school. And we thank you for your time, and we invite any questions or comments that you may have.
Wow. Thank you, Maureen and team. That was amazing. Like, I really would like to come to your community classroom and take part. Yeah, like that your school is a hub of learning. It's, yeah, I'm excited for you and for all the students and especially for the community. And I know that the trustees probably have some questions and comments. So anyone, please chime in.
Frank, I just want to say I love it. A lot of thought has gone into it. It certainly fits in well with our mission statement. It fits in well with our Catholic graduate expectations. It's great, I love it. You can see it was community-driven. And my blessing.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Thank you very, very much, and we look forward to seeing...
Teresa, I think Anne's trying to speak.
Oh, Anne, you're muted.
You're muted.
Anne, you're muted.
You're muted, Anne.
Oh, she knows.
Click on the mic.
Oh, she is, oh.
Madam Chair, may I speak then?
Yes, you sure can, Frank. Mike, sorry.
Excellent, excellent presentation, girls. Wow, you know, that's always kind of a special school in my heart, being a graduate. I can't not like what you do, but I think it is great. I mean, it's time to move ahead with how we present ourselves and rebrand ourselves, if you want any lack of better word. But I think the proposal is super. I think it's well-deserved, and I think we're going to move ahead with this with great expectations. Great job, great job. Looking forward to it, looking forward to some private time with some of your staff, too. I won't mention any names.
Well, I was going to say, Frank, you can do a cooking workshop if you want. I think you're...
Sure, we can make...
I heard you're a good cook.
He is a good cook.
Great. Okay, Anne still muted, so, um, thank you, ladies, once again. And that was an amazing presentation and so looking forward to Saint Louis Living Arts School. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. Moving down on the agenda to 8.2, renewed French language strategy. Hillary Aiken, please.
Just want to make sure I'm unmuted. It's like, good, yeah. Everyone's... Okay. Tough act to follow, Maureen and team, but we will do our best. So I'm just going to try and share my presentation. I just have to make sure that it's shared with volume. Last time it didn't. I guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to slide number six. There we are. So, welcome, everyone, and we are very excited to share with you this evening our renewed vision for French as a Second Language at Canora Catholic District School Board. So I am but one of several passionate FSL educators who are presenting this evening. Part of the team backing me up tonight is Jo Wilkie, who is a new addition at École Saint-Marguerie-Bourgeois this year. In addition to her contagious enthusiasm for FSL, she brings invaluable experience as an elementary core French teacher from her years of teaching at Pope Jean Paul. Jim Trudeau is also presenting with us, and he brings with him his own list of impressive accomplishments in FSL at the secondary level in both French immersion and core French. The three of us came together about two years ago working on the FSL initiatives that were already in place, and we have worked together to develop a new plan to meet our provincial goals as well as strive for some of the locally developed goals that we have set for ourselves. Since then, our group of three has grown to include Madame Kurtz, Madame Sweater, and Dr. Hame as well.
I'd like to take a moment now to introduce our newly appointed French lead, Hillary Aiken. Very exciting news. For many years, Hillary has been a strong advocate for French instruction within our schools. She brings to this position enthusiasm, dedication, and a real thirst for inspiring others on their journey towards second language fluency. It'll be very exciting to watch the ways in which our French programming will flourish under her capable leadership. So congratulations, Hillary, and us.
So our first provincial goal is increasing student confidence and achievement in French as a Second Language. And we have several strategies in place to do that. One of the most significant among them is moving towards an approach that fosters functional bilingualism in all FSL students, from core French to immersion. This requires a shift in mindset as we move away from the more traditional teacher-centered and worksheet-written approach to a more communicative approach based on the principles of the CEFR, which is the Common European Framework of Reference in Languages. which is the Common European Framework of Reference in Languages, which Jim will talk about further down in the presentation. This short video that I am about to show you and hopefully there is sound demonstrates some of the innovative and engaging ways language instruction has changed to take into account the language structures required to meet a learner's communication needs at any given level. So please, Jo, I see you on the screen, could you give me a thumbs up if the sound is working?
No? Okay, Trina, can you offer any um, guidance? Jordan?
Jordan, are you out there?
Yeah.
I think he was helping you.
Screen there, did you select, was there an option to select share the audio as well?
There was when I did it just with the three of us. Let me try again. Okay, so I'm gonna click stop sharing and then I'm gonna reshare. Where is the audio? I don't see.
Hillary, I think you have to share just the single tab and not your entire desktop for it to get that option.
I thought I did that. Yeah, I did. I shared a window. Is that not right?
Maybe try, stop the voice, Teresa.
Oh, there, I see the sound button. Okay, let's try, I'm sorry. Okay. Working? Yes? Yeah, it's working.
Christian, qu'est-ce que tu penses? C'est de pas? Oh!
Oh, he's got it.
Oh, tu as mangé! Est-ce que c'est bon?
Je suis femme de plaisir. Just with spoons.
Oh no, Sophie arrived. Reviens ici!
Oh!
Non, non, non. Stop d'appeler. Here, c'est au mystère. With et le faucon.
That's good.
That's good.
Marci, mon bateau. Marci, le ben of the prince de Pice. Olé, bro. Oh my God, this is Sharky's, gonna eat the wrong food. Burn the shark. Olé! Olé, bro.
So you see functional bilingualism is already happening within our schools now and we're just going to keep making it happen. So bien joué means well played and essentially a big part of the strategy that we want to focus on is celebrating the wonderful things that KCDSB is already doing to promote French as a second language. Uh, I wanted to highlight that KCDSB is among the select few boards in the province that can boast about offering our students French as a second language instruction starting in grade one instead of the province mandated introduction at the grade four level. This allows our English track learners an additional three years to develop their competence in French before reaching grade seven. Bravo KCDSB! Our summer learning program. So last year marked the first year of what is hoped to be many where we were able to offer a French as a second language summer learning program cohort. We are working on being able to offer the same this year, dependent on course, of course, on getting staff to fill those positions. The Je parle français campaign. The goal of this initiative is to put a spotlight on our graduates who can speak to the benefits and opportunities that FSL education can offer, having gone on to use their FSL skills in their post-secondary endeavors. These posters will highlight some of the benefits and hopefully encourage others to continue their second language education. Here, we see Keely Mashamka, who is a French immersion graduate from STA who went on to study political science and international relations at Université de Tawar. She maintains her proficiency in French by using it daily in our nation's capital. Keely is about one of a dozen students who will be featured in our Je parle français campaign in the coming year. Hiring and retaining qualified French as a second language teachers is an ongoing challenge across the entire province, particularly in the Northwest. One of the strategies we are committed to implementing is providing relevant professional development opportunities for our French teachers, keeping them engaged in best-in-current practices and providing them with a network of colleagues with whom to share ideas and resources. It's so important for our FSL teachers to feel connected to a network of colleagues as oftentimes FSL teachers are isolated in their professions. We wanted to make sure that teachers feel like they are part of a greater community. Some specific professional development examples that we have offered are Francophonie Committee has put together several PD sessions at every available PD day. This past fall, we offered a session called Game On, where participants played and shared their own communication-driven games to engage their learners. We also offer local as well as regional opportunities for French as a second language teachers with our regional CEFR team. I'm going to pass the baton over to Jim to present our second provincial goal.
Okay, our second provincial goal is to have more students taking and staying in French until graduation. With this in mind, we're working at bringing in a few new programs to the KCDSB. First of which is the DELF. The Diplôme d'études en langue française is one of the major pushes we're implementing in the coming year. Uh, the goal of the DELF as well as that of the CEFR is the use of French language in authentic situations. We spent considerable effort certifying our FSL teachers as evaluators of the DELF exam and the plan is to have our French lead trained as a DELF examiner. The CFR levels, uh, as you see here, um, we're hoping to evaluate the A and B levels which are beginner and intermediate in our schools in the near future. This test will give them an internationally recognized qualification in French that they can put on their CVs and university applications. It's our hope that this will encourage forward-thinking students to stay in French and recognize the value of being functionally bilingual. For those who struggle or for those simply looking at improving their current level, we're looking at developing a peer mentoring program. This would involve secondary immersion students running study groups at lunchtime. With the guidance from a French teacher, this group would help younger students polish their French while allowing the older students the opportunity to hone their skills by teaching new learners. Our hope is that by working with each other, the students will develop more confidence using their French and accept that they are able to express themselves to a certain extent in their second language. One of the outcomes we are hoping will stem from the peer mentoring is the opportunity and willingness of core French students in grade six to challenge the DELF at an A2 level to potentially join the French immersion cohort in grade seven as a modified version of late French immersion. This is strictly in the planning stages at the moment, but we are hoping to survey parents in the near future to determine if there's interest or in further exploring this avenue.
Um, an important aspect of maintaining student interest in pursuing French until graduation involves continuing to deliver the best French programming possible. With this in mind, student engagement is a key factor in maintaining student motivation. We want our students to become passionate advocates for French. One way of accomplishing this goal is to help them make connections to the language and culture by exploring the fun side of learning a second language. An example is pictured here in this beard-making competition inspired by a unit on the Festival de Voyageur. This photo that you see represents the first, second and third place winners as chosen by the class. A common protest among students, particularly in French, begins with two simple yet powerful words, "I can't", "I can't pronounce this", "I can't understand you", "I can't remember the word", "I can't speak French", I think you get what I mean. Um, helping students become confident and comfortable in the language is always a number one priority for us. As a result, nurturing a can-do attitude is essential. Uh, in this example that you see on your screen, students are making observations at the scene of a crime and will turn their surveillance into a video news report. Activities such as this highlight their abilities. They can tell time, they can give feedback on what they see around them, they can introduce themselves to the world. Experiences like this go a long way towards helping our students see themselves as functional French speakers. It is important to provide meaningful experiences to our students or for our students. Of equal importance, it is our responsibility to engage our French language learners in tasks that are relevant and authentic. Take this vocabulary lesson on the parts of the face as an example. What better way to help students form deep and impactful connections with vocabulary than to inspire them to create, describe and eat these edible selfies? Also, in my experience, um, you can never go wrong with food, even when you're feeding strange things to your students. Finally, forming critical partnerships between teachers, school divisions and other invested members like you guys is a very important aspect of student engagement. Building and strengthening these relationships goes a long way towards creating a sustainable learning community. This is an example of a food eating challenge featuring grade six and grade eight students from Pope Jean Paul II and Saint Thomas Aquinas. We believe more collaborations such as this will enhance the quality of our instruction. This leads nicely into our third goal, which is to increase student educator, parent and community engagement. Connecting to the broader French cultural community can be a challenge. We are slaves to our geography and both Quebec and France are what we might call our far-flung neighbors. They are not easily accessible to us. Luckily, there are a few activities close to home that can bring a little French culture into our students' lives. The Festival de Voyageur is one of these experiences. We try as often as possible to make the two-hour trek to Saint Boniface to experience a live interpretation of our cultural history. And students always look forward to those field trips. But when travel has not been an option, we've still been able to host local Voyager festivities such as the one pictured here.
Continuing our efforts to involve and make use of the community, we've we have been and will hopefully be able to continue attending plays at the Saupré Molière Theatre in Winnipeg. Our students have attended numerous plays in the past such as Gabriel Dumont's Wild West Show and La Comte de Richaud, among others. In an effort to remind the students that French is not simply a subject in a textbook but a living, thriving part of our culture and nation, we have organized trips to Quebec City during the winter carnival. While there, the students visit historic sites and participate in carnival events, all the while eating far too many beaver tails. This year, Saint Thomas Aquinas was the first school in Ontario ever to participate in the Festival de Vidéast. Working with a filmmaker from France as well as Canora's own Matt Kennedy, the students wrote, acted in and shot short films that would have been screened in the theater in Winnipeg along with hundreds of other students. Fingers crossed for the 2021 festival. Finally, the team continues to seek out French performers that we can visit in Winnipeg or who are willing to brave the trip to come perform in Canora. In the past, we've hosted mete fiddle players, we've gone to concerts and performances at the Centre Cotiral Franco-Manitobène in Winnipeg. Uh, Canadian Parents for French, we've put in a request to have a local chapter established in Canora. Um, the group, this group works to involve the parents of our students in our learning community and hopefully bridge the gap between the schools and the families.
Voila Live. Voila Live is an initiative to alleviate some of the stress that FSL students and parents may experience around homework. It is a virtual platform offering live online tutoring by certified French instructors who are available to assist with all subject matters areas in the French language, not just French as a second language. It is available four days a week, Monday through Thursday, from 4:00 PM till 7:00 PM. And we have a board license, so it is available to all students, core French and immersion students alike. There are some technical tweaks that we are in the process of figuring out, but it has potential to offer an answer to frequent requests for after-school hours French tutoring and homework assistance. So those are just a few of the highlights we wanted to share with you. I can stop sharing, I think. Um, yeah, we wanted to share with you regarding our renewed French vision for 2020 through 2023. We always welcome feedback and input from all of our stakeholders, so we encourage you to connect with us, one or all, um, with any questions or concerns you have. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much Hillary, that was great. That's good to see a renewed interest and focus on French. Um, trustees, any comments? Questions? But I know Anne is having trouble with her mic because she would be the first one saying, bravo, well done, it's, it's awesome, yeah.
I just want to highlight the fact that we have two of our SMB graduates that are with us tonight, so Max and Julia. Kudos to you, you can speak towards the FSL initiatives.
Great.
Yeah, if I could add, um, the, the DELF, the addition of the DELF is something that actually we would look forward to, especially because you hear a lot of students, not necessarily complaining, but just wishing that they had the opportunity to take that course as it's really only in Beaver brave, or sorry, not the course, the test. But it does offer a lot of opportunity to students trying to reach a higher level and it does show you where you're at, so that'd be pretty awesome to see that involved in our schools. That's all, yeah.
Awesome.
Glad that that's been added.
The DELF, yeah. I, I know it's a benefit, I mean, both my boys were in French immersion and, and to this day they still use their French, so it, it's amazing. Okay, thank you so much Hillary and team. Awesome presentation and we look forward to seeing what you're building on. Thanks. Um, next on the agenda, I, ah, there we go. Um, eight point three, introduction of the new student trustee for 2020, 2021 school year. Girls, I'll get you to introduce them, Claire and Julia.
Um, we actually have that as a part of our report, if we could do it then, if that's okay?
You know what? Sure, that works for me, so we'll just leave that and, because we're gonna be at your report in one minute.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay. Eight point four, then, Canadian Catholic School Trustees Association, Tunis for Tuition 2020 Trophy Challenge. Frank Bastoni was the spear that headed this, so I will let him speak to this.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just extremely pleased when I was on the virtual AGM for the Canadian Catholic School Trustees Association to find out, out of the blue, that we had been awarded the trophy for the board that raised the most funds per pupil, per FTE. And so that was a very pleasant surprise on the virtual AGM. And I just want to thank everyone that participated in our drive to raise funds for those families that are less fortunate than we are across the country in jurisdictions where Catholic education is not funded or not fully funded. We're quite blessed here in Ontario and a couple of other provinces where we do have full funding and partial funding. But in those jurisdictions where they do not have any funding, they make a sacrifice. Those families decide that they want their children to receive a Catholic education, and it has to come out of pocket for them. And so this Tunis for Tuition Drive provides financial assistance for those families that make that sacrifice. And so again, this year, across the country, over $100,000 was raised. The news release came out from CCSTA, which speaks very graciously of our efforts to raise funds, as well as those other boards that raised a tremendous amount of funds. And I share the credit for this with everybody that supported the cause. And I look forward to spiriting the drive. And I know we can do better. We did very well. And so I'm very honored, as I'm sure all the other trustees are, to be recognized that way. So thank you. Thank you for jumping on board.
Thank you, Frank. It was your leadership that got us recognized by our national cohorts. So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, eight point five. Ta-da, student trustee report, what we've all been waiting for. Ladies.
Claire, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just can't see you. All right. Good evening, trustees, director of education, coordinators, and system leaders. Despite the unforeseen circumstances, we continue to live life to the fullest and to finish this year with a bang.
At this time of the year, students would have been stressing up when they're coming exams. But since there's no exam this year, students are busy doing assigned assignments and finishing up their culminating activity.
The day before the grad ceremony, both St. Thomas Aquinas High School and Beaver Bray Secondary School will have a drive-by celebration that will take place on the harbor front. Graduates will receive a cap and are asked to bring their signs and wear their school colors. The OPP has approved of this event. They will social distance on the greenbelt where parents can drive by and take pictures.
The staff of PASTIA have been hard at work trying to make the best of the situation and still give the class of 2020 a graduation to remember. On June 25th at 7:00 p.m., there will be a virtual grad ceremony, complete with my valedictorian speech and grad song that was pre-recorded by selected students in TA. Details regarding how to link into the ceremony is said to be sent closer to the event. The day after the graduation, grad students are invited to come to the school at a scheduled time for outdoor photo opportunities.
Although I am very sad to say that this is Claire's last meeting, we would like to welcome Max as the new student trustee for St. Thomas Aquinas High School. Max is a phenomenal student who plays in the senior band and on the basketball team. He also volunteers with the time he has to spare. I'm very excited to see what we will accomplish in the future.
Welcome aboard, Max. I know you will be an amazing student trustee, and Julia will be a great role model and mentor to you. I hope both of you will love and enjoy being a student trustee as much as I do. This being my last report, I would like to say a big thank you to the trustees, board members, and to my fellow students for giving me the opportunity to be the voice of our school. It's truly been a great experience to be part of this table and be able to report to you over the past two years. It's an honor to work and grow closer with each and every one of you, and I will for sure miss all your smiling faces. I will always treasure all the moments I had here forever. I know both Julian and Max will become true student leaders and ambassadors of St. Thomas Aquinas High School. Best wishes to both student trustees, and I hope all of you will have a great summer. Thank you.
I'm going to miss you, too.
Yeah. Bravo. Well done again. That was, that was great. Thank you. I'm just going to move to eight point six.
A few words from Max, perhaps, Madam Chair?
Oh, okay, we can.
Sure.
Max, a few words?
Sure, yeah. I don't have really much to say, but I want to, as the student trustee, I want to respectfully show and honor all the questions, concerns, and goals that all my student peers have. And yeah, across the two years, I hope to make a difference and be a part of this. So I'm very, very excited.
Okay, great. Thank you. Amazing. Eight point six, presentation to the student trustees. Claire and Julia, on behalf of the trustees, we would like to thank you for your positive contributions and commitments to each of our board meetings over the past year. Your monthly reports are stellar. Claire, as this is your last meeting with us, we would like to offer you our warmest congratulations and prayers on the next phase of your life journey. Thank you from all the trustees. I believe we have a little gift for you?
Yeah.
You can open them. I know you're waiting to open them.
I haven't opened them yet. I'm so excited.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow.
It's really nice.
I love it.
Haha. Yeah. Great.
Going to display this into my room.
Yeah.
Claire, I think there was an envelope in yours as well.
Yes.
For all your hard work over the last two years.
Madam Chair, actually, both student trustees have an envelope, special envelope in their package.
Sorry. Both trustees, awesome. Julia, thanks, Trina.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Did any of the trustees want to share anything with our two lovely ladies? Okay.
Great job, ladies.
Yeah, it was great.
I'll miss those smiling faces sitting across from you.
Oh, Claire.
I'll miss that.
I will see Julia next year.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move down to nine, policy governance, nine point one. Approval of the minutes found on page seven. Give the recommendation, please, Trina.
That the report of the Policy Governance Committee meeting of June 2nd, 2020, approved as circulated.
Okay, moved by. Oh, Frank, seconded by. Uh-oh, everybody froze on me.
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I froze there, but everybody's back now. That's great. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Under nine point two, there isn't anything. Do nine point three personnel? Nine point three point one, a presentation. Ah. So this evening, we are honored to congratulate one of our own. Paul Landry has been a trustee with our board for 35 years. Paul, you have been a cornerstone of growth at Canora Catholic. Your 35 years of dedicated leadership, vision, and service has shaped our great board into what it is today. And without further ado, I will get Mike to do a little presentation.
Before I do, besides having the pleasure of doing this, I want to make sure everybody relates to the fact that Paul has been a trustee for 35 consecutive years. So if you became a member of our board or an employee at the age 25, you would now be 60 years old and probably looking at retirement. Back in 1985, Oprah Winfrey starred in the movie The Color of Purple and was a success. You could mail an envelope for 22 cents. Rent was about $300 a month. A car, a new car, was $9,000. Michael Jordan, one of the best basketball players ever, was a rookie, and cell phones were just coming out. So to say Paul has been a Catholic servant leader through a lot of things is an understatement. He has been a cornerstone of this board from inventing the time and the effort of that board to get the only Catholic high school west of Thunder Bay built. The job he did with amalgamation with Red Lake in 2009. All of the things that are important for Catholic education in our area, Paul has been a part of for a long time. So I'm going to walk from my office to his and make a little presentation. So bear with me. Very shocked. Mike Budini.
It is on.
Yay.
So I'm in here now. Where's Paul? There he is.
Social distancing.
We're social distancing. This is the certificate of our appreciation, Paul, for 35 dedicated years of Catholic leadership. It's amazing that someone would do this, and we're so proud to have you as a member of our board. You have been a servant leader, and we've all benefited from your interaction with us and your efforts at the board table. We do appreciate it. And this is a small gift of our token of appreciation, okay? You've earned it, and I want you to open it in front of everyone and have a good look. And we'll share the gift card.
You're funny, Michael.
You have something to cut it, yeah? It feels like Christmas. Yeah, it is like Christmas, yeah.
Yeah.
You're not trying to save the wrapping paper, are you? Isn't that beautiful? Look at that.
Wow. Very nice.
Paul's going to give us a little thank you speech.
Did we surprise you?
Are you surprised?
Surprised, shocked, and very appreciative. And it is, it's for the betterment of our students. I've been doing this, and I believe any of the trustees that are at this table, it's for the betterment of students in the Catholic school system. And not only Catholic schools and the students, but all the students in Northwest Ontario. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to have been able to accomplish what we've accomplished as a team, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Well deserved. Thank you. Okay. Nine point five, nine point five point one, borrowing resolution. That's found on page 11. Allison? Is Allison with us?
Hi. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you just want to do a little?
Sure, I will. Sorry, I hope everyone can hear me. I don't have the greatest internet. But anyways, this we bring forward annually for the board to review the short-term borrow which that we have with CIBC. So we currently have an operating line of credit of $5 million. In the fall of 2018, we increased the amount from $3,000 to $5 million. And this was to support the Ministry of Education when they implemented the new cash management strategy. So throughout the past school year, we did use a portion of our line of credit, and this was in the beginning of the school year of September, to support our operating cash flow. We accessed these funds for no longer than two weeks, and this is just part of the delayed cash payment, and it supports the cash flow. So as moving forward, we do submit this resolution to CIBC each year. And that's all I have to present.
Okay, thank you, Allison. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board renew the borrowing resolution with the Imperial Bank of Commerce for $5 million with the total amount previously borrowed that has not been repaid at $0.
I'm with that.
Okay, moved by Paul and seconded by Frank. Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. All right. We will move on down to nine point six, program nine point six point one, continuity of learning during COVID-19 pandemic. Derek, you finally get to talk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. As we're all well aware, we've been in a teacher-led, at-home learning environment since after March break, and I'm very proud of our students, our families, parents, community members, how they've responded to this to keep learning, moving forward. I'll speak a little bit about what we may be looking ahead in our preparations for that. But first, I'd like to also acknowledge our staff. Our staff have worked really hard under very trying conditions to keep learning, moving forward for our students, working with our students, our families, and our community members. And Madam Chair, I'd like to, in this forum, present an award to all staff. And I don't know if my camera is going to let me. I guess I have to put it right in front of me. So on this, this is presented to all staff this year as the Director's Award of Excellence. And every staff member is receiving this award, and a copy will be put at every school and at the CEC. And it is in grateful recognition of the outstanding dedication and service to Catholic education during the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. And so, Madam Chair, I present this and in grateful recognition to our staff who have responded to so many needs of students and their families during this COVID-19 pandemic and the necessary teacher-directed at-home learning. And this is every single staff member, every single educator of the Canora Catholic District School Board. And so, you know what? Certainly, a hand is in And so, uh, so, uh, you know what, certainly a hand is in order for all staff, so bravo. I'm very proud. And, uh, in addition, in this, uh, short report, uh, tomorrow evening, we will be hosting a Microsoft Teams Live event, uh, for our entire community, students, families, staff, community members, of course trustees, uh, everyone, to come and, uh, certainly ask questions, uh, to receive a, a, a bit of an address from myself, and to participate in a thought exchange. And the thought exchange, you're familiar with thought exchange, because when we put together our strategic plan, which we're very proud of, growing, investing, engaging, thought exchange was, uh, an integral tool to get the ideas from our community that formed the basis for our strategic plan. In a similar way, we will be using thought exchange to find out what has been working really well in, in this teacher-directed, at-home learning environment, and what could be improved. Uh, and also, we'll be, um, looking at a return to, to school this fall. And so we're trying to ascertain what do students need, what do families need for a successful return, depending on what it looks like. And so we're looking forward to getting this data from the thought exchange and also responding to the community, um, and letting them know, these are the ideas that were shared, these are the ideas that were very prominent, and this is what we're going to do about it, uh, as, as a community. Um, and so, Madam Chair, just briefly, not to steal my thunder for tomorrow night, but, uh, um, we, we, there are three models that, that may occur. Uh, they may occur exclusively, or they may occur in concert. They, uh, different, at different times, we'll be employing, uh, different models. So there's our, our conventional model, our regular model of face-to-face learning. Uh, everyone goes to school, participates in classes. Uh, and that, if that does happen on the advice of our public health partners, which will likely receive the middle of August, uh, we will have additional health and safety measures in place. Of course, physical distancing, uh, reminding about handwashing, reminding about cough etiquette, uh, will be certainly part of that. There may be other measures that our public health partners, uh, direct us to do. Uh, it, there may be a hybrid model where a portion of students are at school one day and a portion of students are at school another day. And so we certainly have a plan for that also in place. Um, and the third model, it would be exclusive, teacher-directed, at-home learning. And again, that'll be on the advice of our public health partners that will receive, uh, in the, around the middle of August. In addition, the ministry will be releasing, uh, some guidelines at the end of June to help direct us in our further planning. And these will be the do's and don'ts. Uh, so there'll be high-level guidance and advice as we put together our plans. And Madam Chair, I'm very pleased to report that the Rainy River District School Board, the Northwest Catholic District School Board, the Kiwait and Patricia District School Board, and Canora Catholic District School Board are working together on a common set of plans. And so the re, the rationale behind this is so there, there is common messaging and predictability for our entire community. Um, and, uh, and sorry, Madam Chair, I'm very remiss. Aurora Gorialis is also part of this, uh, this, um, this consortium. So it's, so it's all of the boards, uh, west of Thunder Bay, uh, that are participating in this. And so we will have a, a common approach, and we will also communicate this in a common way. Um, and, uh, so as, because as you can imagine, if there were five different plans floating around our community, how confusing that would be for students, families, and even staff. And so this way, we'll, uh, use the best advice from around the world and, uh, come up with a plan. We already have draft plans in place, and, uh, we are awaiting further direction from the ministry, uh, at the end of June, uh, in the form of the high-level guidelines, the do's and don'ts, if you will, so we'll modify our plans accordingly. And then finally, we will receive advice around the middle of August, uh, from the government, directed by the COVID-19 Command Table, our public health partners, as to which model we will initially, uh, embark on as we return to school in September. So Madam Chair, I know that's a lot of information, and, uh, if there are any questions from trustees, I would be pleased to take them at this point regarding the continuity of learning.
Any questions, trustees? No. Derek, I just want to thank you, I know you're working tires, tiresly, whoops, I just lost my connection.
We can still hear you.
Okay, sorry.
You're still there.
Okay, um, so yeah, I know you have some really long days answering all these questions from parents and teachers and all our educators, and thank you very much for all that you do for us, and I think there's some busy times coming mid-August. Thank you. Um, so 9.6.2, Special Education Advisory Committee Report. Anne Sweeney, um, Anne, ah, hi, Anne.
Hi.
Great.
Yeah, I got you. Hi there, everybody. Uh, this was, um, the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting held, uh, virtually, um, on May the 19th. And, uh, it actually was a very long meeting. I'll try to shorten it as much as possible. Uh, and, um, we, we always address correspondence. So in a piece of correspondence, we, um, became aware of what's called the After-School Development Program for Students with Autism. So this, uh, letter, um, was sent around to all of the CX from, uh, a school board in Southern Ontario. And, uh, the letter was to the ministry requesting that funding for this program would be available during the summer. At present, we do not have, uh, we have not accessed this program because we have not found a community partner to assist with running it. Um, now, I've mentioned Joelle Willis' name many, many times in my report, she is with Firefly, and she has just begun a new portfolio in autism programming. And she will be reaching out to Sarah Pizer, who is our Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Lead, to see if there is something that they can work on together. And we're not going to, um, provide any response to the ministry until we, uh, become more aware of how this program might fit with, uh, with us. Um, our coordinator, Andrea Batters, did provide in-depth the changes to the Special Education Plan, draft changes, and these changes were moved and seconded by the committee. Derek and Andrea also went into detail describing a form that is provided by the Ministry Advisory Council on Special Education. And, um, this is, uh, from the Provincial Parent Association Advisory Committee, and they will be using this form to, um, gather input on issues related to special education programs and services. And in the completion of this form, Derek and Andrea have been reaching out to our co, uh, co-terminus board. Andrea also reported on updates from all of our schools. Very amazing what our schools are accomplishing for our children in, uh, special education programming. Uh, Firefly, Derek, and Andrea shared the various programs being used to support students and families with internet access, because that has been our common means of teaching and learning these days. Derek brought the committee up-to-date with the board's and the province's COVID-19 update, and at that time, we still did not have any information from the ministry on what return to school will look like in September, and we still don't. Allison Smith provided the committee with an overview of the Special Education Grant, its six allocations, and the Special Education Budget. And that is something that, um, that she also shared with us. Uh, now, both, uh, Firefly and KACL partner with us in the support of our children requiring special education. So I think it's important, they always, uh, give us a report or an update from, from, um, their perspectives, and I think it's important that I share that with you, because they are so integral to the support of our students. So from Firefly, their virtual services are continuing throughout the region. They are beginning in-person services with protocols and procedures for return to face-to-face services for the, uh, clients who are in the highest need group. Currently, in our region, there is no option for families to access enhanced services, including applied behavioral analysis. But Firefly does continue to provide childcare for essential services workers. Angela Holmstrom from Canora Association for Community Living did share that emergency childcare is available, both at the Lakeside location and at PJP, and there is no cost for parents who are emergency service workers, and applications are through the Canora District Services Board. So KACL children's programmings are continuing to provide virtual weekly parent groups to allow families to connect and share strategies and supports during this difficult time. And in her report as coordinator, Andrea spoke about Firefly's annual virtual information conference that was held May 7th and 8th, and numerous Canora Catholic staff did attend. On, uh, May the 15th, um, the, an Empower trainer and teacher mentor with Sick Kids Literacy Program gave our principals a brief session about Empower reading, and our board is looking into expanding this program beyond Grade 2 and 4 spelling and decoding intervention. And after March break, our student information system changed from Maplewood to Foillette Aspen. And the new Aspen system is a secure, consistent place to record student-in-school team information, and the transition will include the special education documentation. And that's the end of my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Anne, for that report. That was a good meeting, I was able to attend that one. It was, yeah, very informative, everyone there works hard, and they really look after all our special education students. Ah, so that brings us to 9.6.3, Special Education Annual Review. Um, that is found on page 13, Andrea Batters, hello.
Hello, hi, and good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, also, uh, Anne for providing that summary. Um, just double-checking, um, that everyone can hear me all right. Great, okay, sometimes our internet, thank you, sometimes our internet has a bit of a lag time, um, so thank you for, uh, confirming. Um, so good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, Director Hame, colleagues and guests, thank you for this opportunity to share a summary of the Canora Catholic District School Board's Special Education Plan Changes for this year. Um, I will speak to, uh, the most significant, uh, revisions to the plan as summarized in the table that was, um, provided in your package. Um, and I will stride over some of the, you know, grammar usage, some of those smaller pieces to keep things, uh, moving along, so. Um, in the first, the, the main area that was, um, updated, uh, was the early identification procedures and intervention strategies, especially as they relate to, um, early learning and screeners. So on page, uh, 16 of the plan, uh, within the introduction, uh, we're just doing an update here, um, as proposed, to remove, uh, an outdated reference to the Full Day Early Learning Kindergarten Program Draft Document 2010, and, uh, replace it with the, uh, Kindergarten Program 2016 document, and, uh, hyperlink that as well for this section. Um, moving on to page 16, the topic is, uh, Description, um, and we're just going to just make an update to the PPM, um, with the acronym, sorry, that was housekeeping. Um, under the topic on page 16, um, just adding the phrase "of the standard" to the section subheading to, um, remove the reference to identifying children with high risk of failure, um, instead to, um, just sort of rephrase on the positive, to replace it with the statement Reading, to provide details of the board's early identification procedures and intervention strategies to the ministry and the public. And, uh, also additionally include a hyperlink to the Most Up-to-Date Special Education in Ontario 2017 Policy and Resource Guide document, uh, as well as indicating the page reference. Moving on to page 17, the topic section is Basic Premises for Early Identification, um, adding the following numbered points, um, including the word communication as one of the four domains of human development, as, uh, indicated in that section. And then also, um, including cultures in recognition of and reference to student diversity um, during the early identification process. On page 18, uh, just, uh, to organize this section, adding the subheading Guiding Principles and Philosophy, um, and the phrase, uh, Key Beliefs as well. Uh, additionally, inserting the phrase that, uh, all students are capable and can succeed to emphasize student strengths, replacing classroom teachers in this section with educators, um, just to improve, uh, readability and avoid repetition, and to highlight the educator teams that do also include our ECE, um, educators as well in the kindergarten classes. Include a hyperlink to the McCain and Mustard, the earlier study, and, um, just add the correct page reference there, um, for cross-referencing within the plan. Moving on to page 18 and 19 of the, uh, Special Education Plan, adding a subheading Process for Early and Ongoing Identification. In this section, the revision would also, um, add to the study above a new section that just, uh, indicates that it's a process for early and ongoing identification, and include, um, the Transition Document from early on, um, which is, uh, which is titled How Does Learning Happen for Your Child? As part of, um, the key transition planning and, um, collaborative efforts that preschool sending agencies and school teams promote, um, for students that have, um, special needs entering, um, and transitioning into kindergarten, um, for their new school experience. On page 19, um, under the topic Process for Early and Ongoing Identification, um, removing "involved in childcare" and replacing that phrase with "connected with an agency" prior to school enrollment. Um, that term, uh, speaks to not just a childcare center, but could be any service provider, um, such as Firefly, um, the Northwestern Health Unit, or KACL as a sending agency that can provide additional transition information to assist, um, supporting the best possible transition to school for, um, these young learners entering kindergarten. school for these young learners entering kindergarten. The next section on page 19 is just housekeeping, so we're just going to stride across to page 20, which is Receiving School Principal and/or the Special Education Coordinator, as roles and team members for the transition to kindergarten process for early and ongoing identification. Include the option for the sending agency to host the initial transition meeting to the third bullet. So it would read Offer to Host or Make Arrangements for the Key School Team Members to Attend, if taking place at the sending agency, the initial meeting of the transition team. So that is just to emphasize the reciprocal relationship and collaboration of the receiving kindergarten school team and the sending agency throughout this whole transition to school process to support children entering school for the first time. And then moving down here, the additional two points of this section would again emphasize the child and family focus of the kindergarten transitions to support individualized goals. So adding these points, the receiving school principal will include the student on the in-school team meeting agenda for a meeting in September, just to circle back to check in and see how transition's going with the support of teachers, other educators, and learning resource teachers with a conversation and follow-up in an in-school team. And the second point would be the in-school team will connect back to the family and sending agency as needed to follow up on transition goals and collect additional feedback that will assist with any individualized program goals. So again, like going back to collaborate with the sending agency, be it a childcare or therapy community partner, so that the transition is kind of a cyclical process, and the needs of an individual student with high needs is that they're continued to be supported, and the dialogue keeps going as needed with the team approach. On page 21, the topic and subheading is Early Ongoing Identification Specific Objectives. The suggestion is to remove the old reference to Failure Following a Child's Academic and Adjustment Potential, and to revise it to emphasize, again, student strengths and timely and appropriate supports. And to remove the phrase At Risk, and include a phrase Explore the Need when referring to Possible Further Assessment. Just reframing some of the language and looking at student strengths and individualized supports. In the guide or the Special Education Plan, page 21, the Early and Ongoing Identification Principles and Beliefs, adding the phrase beliefs to this section would help align to the ministry wording of the Standard for Board Special Education Plans, which is directly from the 2017 Ministry Special Education Document, so just tucking that in to have similar phrasing. The next two pages are housekeeping usage or grammar, so we'll just stride across to page 24, where the topic is Kindergarten Programs: Vision, Purpose, Goals, Effective Assessment, Evaluation, and Reporting in Kindergarten. The update is to remove the entire kindergarten program section, as this isn't a requirement for the Standard for Board Special Education Plans. And kindergarten program and general early and ongoing identification is specifically referred to within the section and the Board's Special Education Plan Document through the sections of Screeners Transition Documents, so the How Does Learning Happen for Your Child? document, the Ages and Stages questionnaire with the social and emotional screeners that gather directly information about a child from the parent or caregiver to assist with transition with the kindergarten teams. The Transition to School Process Associated with Kindergarten Registration have been and are detailed and updated throughout the Early Identification Procedures and Intervention Strategy section and this plan as outlined above. I'll just pause for any questions on that section, because I know that was a lot of information. And I just want to thank the CAC Committee as well, for the CAC team for their input to that section, too.
Any questions?
Thanks.
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next, thank you, the next section is on page 46, which relates to special education equipment, as a housekeeping and annual update. The link to the virtual special education plan on our board website is to be updated with the 2020-2021 special equipment amount guidelines when they become available. Page 56 of our plan, the Special Education Advisory Committee Member List is to be updated to include Angela Holmstrom, Representative from Canora Association for Community Living, and Leslie LaGrosse, Community Member-at-Large. We thank them for their service. And page 59, the Special Education Statistical Summary of the IPRC Process. This summary will be sent to the ministry from each school's IPRC information that is collected for the 2019-2020 school year when this process is finalized, these meetings. Page 60, the Appendix B, Special Education Staff 2019-2020 School Year. An updated staff list for elementary and secondary panels will be submitted with the Special Education Plan Updates as well. And the final section is page 63 of the current Special Education Plan for the Canora Catholic District School Board. It's the Report to the Minister, and essentially, it is a checklist and summary of the areas of the plan that have been changed and noted in the detailed table in your package. So at this time, I invite any questions about the Canora Catholic Special Education Plan?
Trustee. Sorry. Trustees, any questions, Anne? Hello?
Andrea, I am so overwhelmingly impressed to think that you and your team had to go line by line through this document to make those changes. How long did it take you to do that?
Well, there was much that was looked at last year, and this area was a collaborative revision, especially with early learning, with our early years coordinator, Marnie Buffett. So I thank her for her input and feedback about the various transition documents and frameworks and process, and the great conversations that everyone was able to have surrounding the plan. So thank you to the whole team, and yeah, to the CAC members as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Andrea. That was a lot to go through for you and a lot of hard work all year. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Now, if I could have the recommendation from Trina, please?
That the Board approve the 2020 amendments to the Special Education Plan/Manual.
Moved by Anne Sweeney, seconded by Paul Landry. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Okay. And the second recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board forward the 2020 amendments to the Ministry of Education.
Moved by Frank Bastoni, seconded by Von Blab. Any opposed? Nope, that carries. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to 9.6.4, the School Council and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee Reports. Please, Derek.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And earlier this month, we spent a wonderful, I believe, according to the minutes, it was about an hour and 15 minutes or so, hearing from our Catholic School Councils and our Catholic Parent Involvement Committee. It really highlighted the amazing work they did in a very unusual year, of course, to support meaningful parent engagement, to help with furthering student spiritual development, academic arts, athletic achievement, and general student well-being. So we're very proud of our parents as they're amazing partners in this wonderful endeavor we call Catholic education. So I won't go over the presentations there in your board book, and of course, you were there at the presentation, but I'd be pleased to take any questions, if there are any, before we move on to the recommendation.
I just would like to thank all the parents for their involvement on our Catholic School Councils. They really do a lot of great things and make us look good. And the reports in that meeting was just amazing. So thank you for sharing this, Derek. So now we'll move on to the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board accept the 2019-2020 School Council and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee Report as presented.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jeff. Any opposed? No. Seeing none, that carries. Okay, so we'll move to 9.7, Negotiations, OECTA and KCDSB Collective Agreement. And Allison, if you could just tell us a little about this, please?
Yes, I'm just happy to share that last week, we were able to come up with a tentative deal with OECTA. And so we're happy to bring this forward to tonight's meeting so that this vote can be ratified from the board's end, and then we can move forward with that. Thanks, Teresa.
Okay. Thank you very much. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board ratify the local collective agreement between the Canora Catholic District School Board and the Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association for the period of September 1st, 2019, to August 31st, 2022, as negotiated on June 11th, 2020.
Moved by Mike Farrow, seconded by Anne Sweeney. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. All right, and 9.7.2. Derek, did you want to say anything about this?
Certainly, Madam Chair, just before the recommendation. As you're aware, it's expected that a central table for principals and vice principals will be created. And OXTA, the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, is available to be a bargaining agent in this, in these terms and conditions discussions with principals and vice principals. And so the trustees are considering this evening and looking at a recommendation to make a resolution to have OXTA act as the bargaining agent. So if there's any questions, I'd be pleased to take them. Otherwise, we'll be able to move on to the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. So the Principal-Vice Principal Central Discussion Table Regarding Terms and Conditions of Employment. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
Whereas the School Board's Collective Bargaining Act, the Act, designates the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, OCSTA, as the employer bargaining agency for every English-language separate district school board with respect to all bargaining units for central bargaining with OECTA. Whereas the Act contemplates that OCSTA will form part of a council of trustees associations as employer bargaining agency for central bargaining with other non-teaching employee bargaining agents. Whereas it is expected that a central table for principals and vice principals will be, again, created in order to discuss the renewal amendment of central terms and conditions of employment for principals and vice principals. Whereas the Act does not contain any guidance with regard to the designation of an employer bargaining agency for a central table for principals and vice principals. Therefore, be it resolved that where a central table is established to discuss terms and conditions for employment for principals and vice principals, the Canora Catholic District School Board hereby authorizes the OCSTA to act as employer bargaining agent on its behalf for such central discussions. The OCSTA may exercise its role as employer bargaining agent in respect of the Principal and Vice Principal Group, Catholic Principals Council of Ontario, consistent with the obligations and duties created under the School Board's Collective Bargaining Act for support staff, uninized employees.
Thank you for that. So that is moved by Von, seconded by Frank. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Okay, 9.8, Other, 9.8.1, 90th Annual CCSTA Virtual General Meeting Report. Please, Derek, if you could do the little update.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make sure it's a little update. We're very fortunate, as you're aware, to have Catholic trustee representation at the national level through the Canadian Catholic School Trustees Association. And I have a brief report about the 2020 Annual General Meeting. I'd like to start off by highlighting the amazing words from Father Stefano Penna. He talked about the Final Age Message of St. Mark, and it really struck me because, as is always the case, Scripture is just so timely. And in this Final Age Message of St. Mark, I'm not saying we're in the final age, but we were reminded that through times of great tribulation, that we are to lift our heads because there's often an upturning of all things. And I'm certain some people feel their world's turned upside down, but we need to return to Scripture to see the wisdom. And Father Penna really reminded us of that. So it was an amazing start to the Annual General Meeting. And of course, the report of the President was quite inspiring, as well as the committee reports. It was good to be informed on those reports. And then there were the resolutions. And we got to the amazing part, the Trophy Challenge, where it was announced that, of course, Canora Catholic won the Toonies for Tuition Trophy Challenge, helping support students who don't have fully funded public Catholic education in their province. And so we're very proud to win that challenge. And thanks again to trustee Frank Bastoni for really spearheading that effort. We talked about future conventions and conferences, and even though they're not until next June, we don't know what situation we'll be in, and we will look forward to those. So, Madam Chair, that's my brief report. And again, we're grateful to have that national representation.
Thank you, Derek. That was my first virtual AGM. It was very interesting. It can happen. It was coast to coast, all of Canada. It was very well done. Frank or Anne, if you want, have any words? Frank Coran, if you want, have any words?
No, nothing further to add, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay.
Even, even, even I managed to figure it out.
No worries there. Great, thank you. Number ten, Committee of the Whole. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the Board accept the report of the Committee of the Whole and all recommendations contained therein.
Moved by Anne, seconded by Jeff. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries. Okay, so, we've gotten to the point of future meetings. This is our final meeting, regular meeting for this school season, or school year. Our next meeting is in September. Mind you, we'll probably have some special meetings during the summer. So, before we adjourn, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and safe summer and take some time to relax and breathe. I'd also like to thank our media partners who are here, Ricky from Q104 and Ryan from the Canora Minor News. Thank you. And Trina, you can touch base with Trina if you, and she'll get you some really good stories. And also, I would like to thank Trina for her hard work and determination to get our virtual board meetings just right. Thank you so much.
A lot of it.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to get into.
So, adjourn it, please, the recommendation, Trina?
That the meeting adjourn at 8:50 PM.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jeff. Any opposed? Hearing none, that's a wrap. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Good job. Everybody have a safe summer.
Thank you. Have a good night.